Calling the meeting to order for the August 31st, 2017, special meeting. Close session. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all council are present.
Thank you. Public comments on agenda and non-agenda items, please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon and members of the Newport Beach City Council. My name is Jim Mosher. The whole idea of having noticed meetings, agendas, and opportunities like this for public comment is the hope that input from the public will better inform your decisions. And I wanted to point out that this afternoon, I find myself again in the odd position of being invited to comment, but having not the slightest idea of what I might be commenting about. The printed agenda tells me only you're going into a closed session to talk about anticipated litigation. I actually would have to research the section of the government code to find out that you're talking about the initiation of a litigation. You're apparently being asked to consider the wisdom of suing somebody. I have no idea if you're considering suing the state over the gas tax matter, whether you're suing me or what you want to do. What I wanted to point out to you is it's not always been that way in Newport Beach. We've done better in the past, and I think we could do better in the future. I wanted to read you an identical agenda announcement from January 27th, 2009. The topic of the closed session, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation, cites the government code. It tells the public that what you're going to be talking about is the potential initiation of litigation against the state of California for errors in the allocation of sales and use taxes. People might come to you and give them an opinion that is different than the one you hear filtered through the city staff. I can read you an agenda announcement from March 9th, 2010. Potential initiation of litigation against online travel companies to recover the outstanding transient occupancy tax. And I can read you an announcement from June 14th, 2011. Potential initiation of litigation against Dennis Holland to abate a public nuisance due to a violation of the Newport Beach Municipal Code, Chapter 1064 at 2200 Holiday Road. Mr. Holland was building a boat in the back of his yard, and people seeing that notice actually came here to speak to the city council, saying perhaps litigation was not the right thing to do. Shortly after that, we stopped informing the public of what these closed sessions were about. I think the public is not well-served by not knowing what you're doing, so I think if we went back to the format we had in the past, we would do a lot better. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any other comments? Seeing none, Mr. Harp.
The city council will adjourn to closed session to meet with legal counsel regarding possibly initiating litigation in regards to one matter. Thank you.
Thank you. We are recessed until the 5:00 special meeting. Called the meeting to order for the August 31st, 2017, special meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect all council are present.
Thank you. This time, please rise with us as we're led by the pledge by Councilman Herdman.
Please join me in saluting our flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please join us in invocation led by Councilmember Pieter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you'd join me. God, we thank you for the wonderful city that we live in and the opportunity that we have to participate in government. God, we thank you for all of the people across the country that are stepping up to help the Houston and Hurricane Harvey people that got in their way or in its way. And God, the show of unity of this country and helping their fellow man is very heartening. God, we thank you for your love, and we pray these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Mr. Harp, do you have a closed session report?
There's no closed session report this evening.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Thank you. Public comments on non-agenda items. We only have one agenda night this evening. Public comments on non-agenda items, please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon and members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. Since you last met here, there has been some publicity about a dispute over public records and how the city divulges them, how people pay for them. I wanted to make some positive comments about that. First, I wanted to compliment the city. I have not made any requests myself, but I've noticed they're sending out new notices of determination that better inform the public as to the various options they have for inspecting documents to save both the city and the person requesting the document's expense. I think that's a positive improvement. I noticed in the press coverage, the online articles had a link to a page that I did not know existed, showing the public all the requests that had been received by the city chronologically. And I am pleased to discover today that instead of being an obscure link that wasn't actually on the city webpage, if you go to the public records request page, that is now prominently there. You don't have to click anything. The list of requests that have come in is there for everybody in the city to see. And the only improvement to this that I would suggest, the response to these requests is usually a link to an electronic document that is on the city website. And although I understand that people who see this list and interested in the same question can simply call the clerk and give them the number, and they will be given a link to the same document so they can review it, it would be nice if the links could sometime be placed on the city website. So as a policy, the council might be wanting to work in that direction. The improvements are good. I think we could do a little bit better. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any other comments on non-agenda items this evening? All right, seeing none, I don't think we'll be needing a report from staff this evening. When I voted with my colleagues to reject the initial funds, I stated that I understood both sides of the issue, and I still do. The funds, quote, "returned" or "taken from taxpayers and shifted to another government entity," are being used in an attempt to justify the largest tax increase in the history of the state. According to the proponents of the gas tax, the average driver will pay an additional $200 per year, which will begin being collected this November. I have heard from enough taxpayers who would like us to accept the funds for me to reconsider my view on this item. In many emails, residents expressed the same frustration for the highest gas tax increase in the history of the state, and respectfully asked that we accept these funds despite the fact that we are only receiving a fraction of what is paid to be returned at the local level. I scheduled a special meeting in response to those emails and public statements from colleagues on this dais expressing their desire to revisit this issue. I have decided a more effective way to send a message to Sacramento is to do all I can to support the initiative to repeal the gas tax. While donating $1,000 initiative, hope my colleagues on this dais will also join me in that effort. My goal is to raise a minimum of $20,000 from private donations here in the city. As a public servant, while I have my own views on policies, at the end of the day, I'll always listen to my constituents. At this time, we will be considering a motion to reconsider, not the actual item yet. I'm going to open up to council comments and any motions that they would like to make. Councilmember Herdman.
At our last meeting in August, the council chose by a vote of five to two not to accept SB 1 funds. I was one of the council members who voted no on accepting the funds. However, upon further study and review, I've come to understand that these revenues are, in fact, generated by Newport Beach motorists. Our refusal to accept these funds will not reduce or eliminate the new tax, a tax, by the way, that I consider to be illegal. It will only deprive Newport Beach of our fair share of those funds, which could climb to as high as 1.8 million annually. Council Policy A1, newly revised, under rules of decorum state that each council member has a duty to learn and study the background and purpose of important items of business before voting. Council Policy D9 states in part that we are to provide revenues for high-quality municipal services and infrastructure maintenance and improvements. We have budgeted approximately 8.2 million for road maintenance and repairs this fiscal year. The opportunity to add an additional half million dollars to this amount will allow us to expedite existing repair programs and institute planned projects earlier. SB 1 funds are not free money that we are accepting. Rather, it's money that we have paid at the gas pumps and are entitled to get back. I therefore move that the decision not to adopt a resolution amending the Capital Improvement Program budget to include funding from the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017 and Budget Amendment Number 18BA-002 be reconsidered.
Thank you, Councilman Herdman. Before we move on to other speakers, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Do we actually need to make a motion to reconsider since it's agendized?
Well, I have been advised by the city attorney, I had the same question, that it's the safest to do. So...
I'd be glad to second that.
Thank you. And you are next in the queue if you'd like to speak as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I love, this is a great example of representative government, how it works. I'm glad to bring this back for second choice. As you remember, I made a motion to approve this last time and changed my mind. And that's part of, you know, the way the process works. I was convinced by the people up here, including Mr. Herdman, that, you know, that to participate in taking this money would perhaps help guarantee that we would continue to have this tax forever. There are, there are very good activities and efforts underway to repeal this. It's likely to be on the November 18 ballot. You know, the good news is, is that we heard from our constituents, and I did some extra research, found that, I contacted several of my colleagues in other cities, most of these other cities actually included this money in their budget for this year. We did not. We're blessed in that we had the money to do the roadway improvements that we wanted to do. So that, you know, I think that's good. I think it's understandable that these other cities may not be as, as able to do the work. So, I mean, the good news is the gas tax doesn't go into effect till November 1st, so we have plenty of time to change course. And as Mr. Muldoon pointed out, the gas tax is still bad policy. We'll just figure out a different way to combat that. You know, giving more Sacramento, more money to Sacramento and Caltrans, who already mismanaged their billions, seems rather foolish still, as I had indicated in my own editorial. The fact is that this new gas tax actually diverts about 30% of it to non-transportation items. I don't know if they count the bullet train in as part of that non-transportation item or not. They probably don't. This will raise our tax to 58 cents a gallon, and that's not including the, the sales tax and excise taxes that go up as well, as well as the vehicle license fees that will go up, even on those Teslas that are out there. And it also doesn't include the federal taxes. And when you include the federal taxes and the cap and trade tax, we're looking at about 91 cents a gallon total that each California, including Newport Beach residents, pay. So I don't think anybody thinks that we're paying too little gas tax. And of course, the poor are going to be the hardest hit. The longer, they drive longer distances and pay much larger percentage of their income towards this. So I'm happy to second this motion. I, I'm happy to go after this money, and I'm happy to combat it, and hopefully it'll end in November of 18. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Pieter. And just again, for the sake of discussion, we are only at this time opining on the reconsideration motion itself and the surrounding issues, not what we're going to actually do with the item when we address it after public comment. Councilmember Dixon.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on what you've just said, then I will pull my comment to make at the time we make the proposed resolution motion.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Potem Duffield?
I would do the same as Councilwoman Dixon. Thanks.
Thank you. So seeing that there is a motion and is seconded, at this time, let's open it up for public comment before we bring it back to the dais to vote. So this is, Mr. Harp, I see you moving for the microphone.
I just wanted to confirm for the public, you're going to open up public comment twice, once on the motion for reconsideration, then once on the main motion, is that right?
Now, what would you advise?
I would advise just take public comment now on the motion for reconsideration, then take public comment on the actual motion, if the motion for reconsideration passes.
Okay. So, yeah, so public, public comment, please come forward on the motion to reconsider.
I appreciate that you have changed your minds. I'm actually just going to point out the dichotomy that you declined the funds. When flyers came out from Mr. Duffield and Mr. Muldoon decrying the cost of the upcoming recall election and stating that the street, street repair and maintenance funds would need to be cut with recall election, you know, if the recall election qualified. And if that statement were true, and you've just said that it's not, declining those funds would have been an even more egregious act than it was. And so I appreciate that you have changed your mind on that, but I simply point out that dichotomy.
Thank you. And for the record, that's not what the letter with my image and quote says. Okay. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm Marilyn Brewer, and I've lived in Newport for over 40 years. I want to thank Councilmember Diane Dixon and Brad Avery for their foresight in voting in favor of this issue originally. And kudos to Jeff Herdman for bringing it forth for reconsideration. I represented this district for six years in the Assembly, so I feel tied to it and committed to it. I think as an elected official, your highest and most important responsibility is a fiduciary responsibility. We are a donor city, as well as a donor county, to the state, and you have an opportunity for $480,000 this year and almost $2 million every year thereafter. We, the citizens of Newport Beach, paid that money. It's our money. I looked, and I could not find any extenuating attachments or conditions on that money. So I implore you to change your vote. It belongs to the city of Newport. It belongs to its residents. We want our roads fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. This is only on the motion to reconsider. Seeing no other speakers on the motion to reconsider, are there requests from the dais before we vote on this motion? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Now proceeding to the item, agendized for this evening, and I thank everyone for attending and for your patience this evening, and I also thank those citizens who exercise their right to petition their government and notify the us of their stance on this issue. I will not ask for a staff report unless a council member would like me to do so. Otherwise, I'm going to open it up for discussion on this specific item. Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe in our document, and I'll clarify with Mr. City Attorney, that the resolution that we will be discussing now is what's in our document in the agendized item. Is that correct?
That's correct. So the resolution is in the agenda packet. I know you had some major proposed modifications. We can show those if you'd like.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Yes, I would like to offer a motion to amend the proposed resolution that's in our packet, and I would like to include the provisions in the resolution stating as follows. As highlighted, the resolution is the same as was voted on on August 8th and defeated five to two. So it's the same resolution with these four additional points, that the city council does not support SB 1 or any future increase in fuel excise and sales taxes or vehicle registration fees that may arise from its adoption. And whereas the city taxpayers contributed to funding the road maintenance and rehabilitation account, and the city is eligible for an apportionment of that funding. And whereas the city council is willing to accept its apportionment of the RMRA funding to recover the intended benefit of taxes paid by the city taxpayers and to continue to maintain and improve city streets. And whereas the city council's acceptance of RMRA funding is not intended to be an endorsement of SB 1 or any future increase in fuel excise and sales taxes or vehicle registration fees. So that is my motion.
I will second that motion.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dixon. A motion seconded by Councilman Herdman, and it looks like we have requests for comment from Mayor Potem Duffield.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to comment, I will be also changing my vote on this, and I too will be offering $1,000 towards the initiative for the repeal of this. I, as a business owner for 49 years, seems like a long time when you start when you're 19. I've watched the state of California to its demise for manufacturing, do some pretty odd things, and this is, this is right in line. So just to give you a little example, my factory is in Victorville, and there's a Costco up there. And I, I have to say that I go there once in a while, and every single time that I go, there is a line, a long line, a half an hour line at the gas pumps for about a nickel. These people are honestly trying to save a nickel and spending a half an hour waiting to do this. And so it does really hurt the, the hard-working person, especially my employees out there. And I just want to point out that manufacturing is leaving California for all these reasons. And I've, I've watched it, and I'm close, honestly, to leaving. I don't want to. I would much rather stay where I am. There's very little incentive these days to stay. And, you know, I would just hope the state would reduce its costs. In my opinion, the more, they've got a lot of volume, we've got a lot of people, there should be a way to reduce costs because you, you can defer it over lots of people. And, but we don't. We don't do that. We keep sending, I don't know if we're sending a message, I shouldn't say that. I should say that the lawmakers seem to have free-willy as to whatever they would like to do. And then as Councilman Pieter points out, when they do the work, it is squandered, and I've watched this happen over and over and over. So I, as a person who has over 200 employees, I, I really think that this gas tax is horrendous. And I, I know there's other ways to, to run this state, and I'm just hoping that this initiative, this repeal, will maybe start the wheels turning to that, to that end, and maybe I won't have to move my, my manufacturing out of this state. But I will be changing my mind on this, and I appreciate all the emails that were sent to me. I read them all, and we do listen, as we said we would. And so I thank you for listening. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Potem Duffield. It's sad to think that a green energy company like yours, which is the ultimate goal of many legislators in Sacramento, would be driven out by their policies. Councilman Herdman.
I just want to get clarification. Mayor Muldoon, Councilwoman Dixon made a motion to add four "whereas's" to the resolution. I seconded it, and that's the motion that's on the floor right now, correct?
That is correct.
All right.
Councilmember, Councilman Avery.
I would just like to make the comment that even though I voted yes a couple of weeks ago, it was done with a lot of, I'm like a lot of us, I'm pretty upset with how the state has managed our transportation system and what looks to be continuing mismanagement. I mean, right from the bullet train, and then you get into Caltrans and the bureaucracy there. And so it's really tough to, to do this, and I completely understand my colleagues' mindset when the vote was made. And I think all of us up here, we get it wrong sometimes, regardless, on different votes. And it's a great mechanism to get it right, or at least go back and respect the residents' wishes, and that's great. But I'll just tell you, up here, it's tough to make these votes in the, in the heat of the moment, and we do get, we do let our own thoughts and our own perceptions of good government get, influence us. And so I'll just tell you, it's, it's difficult to do these things, and I think at the end of the day, everybody on this dais wants to do the right thing, and I've always believed that since I first came on council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. And Councilmember Herdman.
A few minutes ago, I, I read something from our council policy manual, and Council Policy A1 has been revised, and it's under rules of decorum, and it says that we have a duty as city council members to learn and study the background and purpose of, background and purpose of important items of business before voting. And this, this was, to me, this was a huge item. And the first inkling I had of it was the Thursday before the council meeting in which we voted on it. I'm just going to say this, and maybe it's my problem and not everyone else's, but three days to study an issue like this and, and make a, a decision, to me, is just not enough. We needed much more work on this. I'm going to say, even though I commend the work that was done, absolutely commend the work that was done on council policies, we were, again, that was an example of having been given those 100 and 1,000 some odd pages of revisions. No, that's not correct. It wasn't 1,160 some policy revisions that were done. We were given those three days before we were to vote on them. That was a several-month effort that took place on the part of Councilman Avery and council, and our mayor, and Councilman O'Neil. And I don't understand why, when a council policy was revised, it couldn't have come out to us in a timely manner. Over that three- or four-month period, they were being revised. Instead, we got it all at once, and it was just an overwhelming job to go through and decipher what was, what was being changed in, in those, those massive revisions. And in the end, it was excellent work. I'm not criticizing that at all. I'm just talking about the timeliness of these, these important items. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Herdman, this is a great example of an item that is not really ripe until November, because the taxes aren't collected them, and our applications actually aren't due until just about that time as well. So...
Our applications, excuse me, due October 12th.
That's right.
Yeah.
So I think it's important for us to know that if ever there's a request of continuance, if you do need more time, I would definitely honor that.
All right. Very good.
Because I think that's part of being judicious.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments from the dais on this item? All right, seeing none, so we have a motion with a second. Open up now to public comments on this item, not, not reconsideration, but the item itself. Ms. Skinner, please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, Mayor Muldoon and members of the council. My name is Nancy Skinner. I just want to follow up what Councilman Herdman just said. It seems to me that, I wasn't here, so I can't say if I was correct or not, that it had been a consent item when we first heard about it, and then it got pulled off the consent calendar. And then it does sound like it didn't really have the kind of time that you're describing would have been important for something as big as this. But that said aside, that's for the future to think about and how to do things in the future, and I appreciate your comment too about maybe putting something off if you don't... don't feel you have enough time. But mostly I came today to thank you for reconsidering on this, and I really appreciated Councilwoman Dixon and Councilman Avery's initial votes, and also for Councilman Hurdman bringing this back, because it gave everybody time to think about it and see that this maybe is what is actually the best thing for Newport Beach. The tax, gas tax issue can be a separate issue completely, but this is for Newport. So thank you very much for what appears to be a positive vote from all of you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon and members of the council. My name is Jim Moser. I had three comments on this. First, first one, it was, it was good to see that you received a number of written comments. I did not submit any myself, because I actually read that policy A1, and it continues to tell me that if I want to submit comments to the city council in a time for them to consider them, I have to get the comments in by 5:00 on Monday before the meeting. And since only learned about the meeting yesterday, Wednesday, it was a little difficult to get the comments in by 5:00 on Monday. So sometime in the future, you might want to reconsider that, so that the people who actually read your policy won't be turned off and think their comments are unwelcome. I assume you, you said you did see these comments, and they are welcome, I believe. Second totally trivial comment is, in addition to the four changes to the resolution that Councilwoman Dixon recommended, I think obviously you're going to want to change the date from what it shows in the staff report to today's date from August 8th. So I would suggest that revision to the resolution. And then finally, I was happy to see that your effort to support the repeal of the gas tax was to be supported by private funding, because one of the early public comments was here earlier this afternoon is from the Chamber of Commerce, and the second paragraph from the end was recommending accepting the funds and using offsetting general fund money to aid in the effort to repeal SB one altogether. The repeal is an election matter, and I think as somebody here must have informed you, public funds are not generally allowed to be used on one side or the other of an election issue. The reason being, as strong as you seven might feel, there are some people of the 80,000 in Newport Beach who will have an opposite opinion, and using their money to advance your idea is generally considered inappropriate. So your private funding is a good idea, the chamber's idea is not one I think you want to follow. Thank you.
Thank you. It's inappropriate and it's illegal, so we would never consider that. Next speaker, please. Evening. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Gail Demmer. I too want to thank all of you very much for reconsidering this particular item. I'm very proud that I have a city council that can come down here and change their mind. We don't see that often, and I applaud you. I do want to say, however, that it isn't only the people in Victorville that go to Costco to buy their gas. We have people in Newport Beach that do that, and I am one of them. We have a lot of people in Newport Beach that don't have the guts to come down here and say it, but we're living on a single income, we are retired, and we are holding on. Every single tax that you people put on us, they're certainly worthy, but they sting. Every single one of them. The tax on undergrounding, or assessment if you'd like to call it, the tax on the sewers, and I thank you for reassessing this tax. It's very meaningful. And I hope that when you make these kind of decisions, you will think of all of us that are home and are not wanting to see these taxes, though we never doubt that what they bring to this city are worthy. But thank you for considering them.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this item? All right, seeing none, bringing it back to the dais. Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a comment about the impact of democracy in our community and the communications that have occurred since August 8th have been remarkable. And for anyone who thinks that their voice does not matter, think again, because your voice, every voice counts, every opinion counts and is weighed by all of us on every matter. So we have a wonderful community that people feel that they can directly communicate with their elected officials. That's what local government is supposed to be. Washington, Sacramento and Washington are difficult to deal with these days, but in your local government, you have a voice and your voice counts. And even though my opinion wasn't changed tonight from August 8th, it, just in general speaking, it just matters to hear from everyone. And I think there have been several hundred emails that have been communicated on this matter alone, and everyone, everyone, I, I read them all, and, and I was on a different side of the issue. But I just want to commend my colleagues for bringing this special meeting to us today, and all of you coming out on a short notice. This is really what democracy is all about, and I'm very proud of, of our community. And I too will be sending a check for that initiative, and we, that's where your voices can be heard as well, to send that message to the state that we can't take it anymore. These taxes have to stop. All right, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments from the dais on the item? Seeing none, we have a motion that's seconded. Let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Punchlines aside, any motions to reconsider? Councilman Hurdman? No?
Well, I guess I'm a little confused. Have we actually moved to pass the resolution to accept these funds? I don't think we have, have we? We've only voted on modifying the resolution to add four whereas's. No, I'm wrong, Will? Okay.
Mr. Harp? Do you want to clarify?
Well, my understanding of the motion was, it was the entire resolution with the four whereas's. If there's confusion, is there any confusion, you can revote on it?
No, that's fine. I just want to make sure we did the right thing.
Then approve the budget amendment.
Okay.
Which was the other part of it.
Excellent. Seeing no motions to reconsider, we are adjourned.